I'm going to call to order the September 13th, 2016 Alexander County Board of Education meeting to order. It's good to see all of you here. I would like to recognize Marty Pennell for our invocation.
Let's pray. Hallelujah. We thank you for today, Lord. Lord, you've just been so great to us. But we thank you for the opportunity to serve on this board. But we thank you for the opportunity to represent the children of this county. Lord, most of all, we thank you for our children, Lord. They're a tremendous asset and blessing to our community and to the parents and to the faculty here. But we just want to thank you for the faculty that we have in place here, Lord. They do such a great job. They mean so much to the upbringing and to the lives of our children. Lord, just pray that your blessings will be on this board meeting tonight, Lord, that it will honor you and glorify you in your holy name. We pray.
Thank you. And I have twin daughters. We have twin daughters of Keith and Alicia Orin, Peyton and Vanessa. They're third grade students at Wittenberg, and they're going to come up to the front here and lead us in our pledge. We're so glad to have you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies.
Thanks, girls.
Okay, board members, you've had a chance to look at the agenda as presented. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Thank you. I have a motion in multiple seconds. Many discussions or deletions? All those in favor of approval of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. And now, we're going to move quickly to honors and recognitions. I'll recognize Dr. Jennifer Butler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It was awfully nice to get schools started again so that we could recognize and celebrate all the good things happening in this school system. Bridget Ryan, would you help me with the first presentation, please? East Alexander Middle School Communities and Schools Site Coordinator Brittany Loudermilk Myers, excuse me, I can't get used to her married name. Let me do that again. Brittany Loudermilk Myers was named Communities and Schools Site Coordinator of the Year for North Carolina. The award was presented during the 2016 Communities and Schools Impact Conference, held in Charlotte on August 10th. The award includes a monetary amount of $1,000, 500 that goes to the site coordinator, and 500 to the affiliate with whom the site coordinator is associated. The award, sponsored by State Farm Insurance Agency, is presented each year to a site coordinator or student support specialist. Brittany was chosen from among other site coordinators in the state for her outstanding dedication, competence, performance, and service to students. During the ceremony, it was noted that she was selected as the state's best and most deserving of the recognition due to the significant impact she has made on the communities and schools of North Carolina network, and her ability to change outcomes for students served by communities and schools is second to none. At East Alexander Middle School and in Alexander County, Ms. Myers is known for her ability to make a significant impact on the lives of all those she works with and serves. According to one student with whom she works closely, Ms. Brittany is a sweet and loving person. She always has a smile for everyone. I can count on her with anything going on in my life. Brittany not only represents her students' families, but she has also managed to represent this county and the goals for which communities and schools stand. Those who know her have seen her ability to connect with people and understand that she has overcome personal obstacles that have made her better and stronger. She embodies those characteristics that set her apart and have played a role in her being chosen as the Communities and Schools 2016 Site Coordinator of the Year. Brittany Myers, I would ask that you please come forward to accept a certificate for the recognition from our school board, and again, we say congratulations to you for such a wonderful honor. the executive director of that program. I'm sorry, I didn't warn you, Glendora. And I see Angie Yates here. Would either of you like to say anything on behalf of this award for Brittany?
I would. I would. Thank you, Brittany. I would like to say something. I tell you what, it was a great pleasure when Brittany was awarded the Site Coordinator of the State of North Carolina. They didn't even tell us, and we were shocked that she had won the award, but once that the shock wore off, we knew that she was very deserving of this award. And it just shows among her peers, not only in, you know, communities and schools here locally, but across the state, what they can achieve by being the Site Coordinator of the Year. And so, we just appreciate you, Brittany, and I didn't mean for you to cry, but we really do appreciate you. And she sets the bar high for the rest of them, and that's what we want for our communities and schools. So, thank you so much, Brittany.
Robin, thank you for being here with her tonight. The next recognition will be made for a teacher at West Alexander Middle School. Ann Beber is the 2015-2016 Outstanding Secondary Mathematics Teacher for Alexander County. Ms. Beber is the head of the Mathematics Department at West, and she is a member of the Building-Based Support Team. The North Carolina Council of Teachers of Mathematics and the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction strive to recognize and reward mathematics teachers who exemplify mathematics teaching excellence by nurturing students' enthusiasm through involvement in mathematics fairs, projects, and competition to supplement and enhance everyday classroom experiences. This recognition is for those teachers who succeed in motivating students to excel in mathematics. Ms. Beber will receive a one-year membership to the NCC TM magazine, and she will receive recognition at the State Mathematics Conference this fall. Ann Beber, please come forward to accept a certificate in recognition from the Alexander County Board of Education and Administrators. Ann, before you're seated, I have to tell you, I watched you at the ballgame Friday night. And I watched, I watched all the children who came up to you and hugged you, and the gratitude and the love for you that I saw through those children. It was very obvious that you're a strong teacher, but also, you're a wonderful person, and we're blessed to have you working with our children. Thank you.
That concludes the honors and recognitions portion, and we'll be moving into our business meeting, so anybody that wants to make a little skedaddle, now would be a good time.
Ms. Ne, will you see if anyone signed up for public? Okay, thank you.
All right, we have no one signed up for public comment, so we're going to move on to our consent agenda. Board members, you've had a chance to look at the items on the consent agenda in your packets. Do I have a motion to approve?
Somebody.
Thank you, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to reports. We have our audit report for the year ending June 30th of 2016 with Anderson Smith &amp; White P L L Cs. Mr. White, it's nice to see you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Hefner, pleased to be here this afternoon. Like we said, we're going to present the audit report for the year ending June 30th, 2016, for Alexander County Schools. I think each of you have a PDF copy on your computers of this audit report and another three-page document, which is a required communications letter as part of the audit. I'm not going to go through the entire package of 70 pages. I think that might keep us here a little bit late tonight. We want to hit the highlights on that. And I want you all to know, if you have any questions or anything, you know, please feel free to stop me, I'll do my best to answer those questions. But within the financial statements, it's really broken into two sections. One is a financial statement section, which is really the numbers portion, and the other is the compliance portion. And that's where we're testing for compliance with federal and state laws of the district and good, sound internal controls of the district. And when I talk about good, sound internal controls, what we're wanting to make sure is that there's procedures and policies in place that will essentially deter and prevent fraud, someone running away with money. That's what we're really looking for when we look at those internal controls. Within the report, the bound package, we issue four opinions on that, and that's the opinion letter that we issue as the independent CPAs on the actual financial statements. The first one is on the financial statements, the numbers portion, and I'm pleased to report that it was an unmodified opinion. And that means that there was no items that we noted during the course of our procedures that would cause us to modify the opinion, where we said everything was in accordance with proper accounting standards except for this modification. So, there were no modifications at all. And the unmodified report is the highest level of an opinion of assurance that we can give as independent CPAs on your financial statements. Within the financial statements, I do want to point out just a few items. The first item is going to be the results of the general fund, Fund II, the main operating fund of the district. And I'm looking at Exhibit Four, you don't necessarily have to turn to that on page 15, but during the year, the district lost $676,000 of fund balance on the general fund, leaving a final fund balance of a little bit under $4.2 million. I just want to point that and bring that to your attention. You still have sufficient fund balance for the operations, but when you lose $670,000, you're not going to be able to keep doing that year in and year out until having some issues with the fund balance. And, I mean, we've done, our firm has done school board audits for essentially our entire career, and ever since the 2008-2009 financial crisis, when the funding shrank at the school board level, and maybe, yeah, you might hear someone say that the total dollars have increased from the state or federal government. That's, in my opinion, is really not true, because you're going to have state mandated raises, state mandated benefits that you have to have. From our opinion, probably all of that has been cut, so, and you can't generate revenues at a school board. When your hands are tied on that, essentially, you can't go out and raise taxes. You have to ask the county or the state or federal government for additional funds. So, the point of all that is, if you do eat into fund balance, the only way to correct that is essentially to cut expenditures. And the thing is, now, I'll do a little analogy of someone building a house or whatever, work you're going to do in your house. If you use part of your savings on your house these days, somebody may have in the past went out and said, well, I'm going to remodel my kitchen or remodel, have a nice fancy spot, have a full-blown remodel on it. That's not what schools are doing when they use fund balance these days. I think they're using fund balance more to pay your power bills at home, from a simplistic standpoint. So, that just makes it so much harder for those cuts, and the thing is, just to manage that going forward the best you can and realize that you can't continue to lose that $607 every year for the next five or six years. The next thing I want to point out is more on a positive note, and what I'm looking at here is Exhibit Eight on the School Food Service Fund, the Child Nutrition Program. In the past, I think I've told each of you that the program had been losing cash and getting in worse shape continually. This year, the program made $200,000, and of that $200,000, $150,000 was transferred in from the general fund, but the main takeaway to that, from my opinion, is that even without the transfer in from the general fund, it still made cash, still made $50,000 of cash. So, I've talked to Ms. Williams about that. I think it's just the culmination of all the procedures they put into place and trying to watch personnel hours, food calls from the bidding processes, and it's came through and shown the positive results. So, very pleased to report that from the Child Nutrition Program. Then, moving on, near the end of the financial statement packet that you have of the PDF, it gets into the compliance portion of our testing, and there's three reports there, and it starts on page 58 of the financial statements. There's one on the overall controls within the district, one on controls as they specifically relate to federal monies that the district receives, and one on the internal controls and compliance as it specifically relates to state awards. All three of those reports were unmodified, commonly referred to as the clean report, the highest level assurance, again, that we can give on the compliance portion of the audit. Then, following that, it lists out any findings that we could, would have, and a finding would be when we noted a significant weakness or a significant violation of a state or a federal law. There were no such findings to be reported as a result of our audit this year from our testing, so please report that. Then, I think each of you have a three-page document, which is a required communications letter, and that is something that really, to be honest with you, this is mainly boilerplate language. It came into requirement when the Enron fiasco happened years and years ago. Congress stepped in and said, you know, you're going to have to have certain communications with the governing boards, and probably a good thing in the end to do that, but I'm not going to bore you going through each and every item. To me, the imported items on here, it discusses any difficulties we've had in dealing with management or anyone at the school district, and we did not encounter any difficulties. I always like to comment on, when we go to the different department heads or up to the individual schools and ask for information, the people give us the information in a timely manner. They don't say, you know, well, let me get that to you, and, you know, it might be a week later before we get it, because if that happens, we're starting wondering, well, did you have it or did you recreate it for us? So, we like, when we ask for the stuff, you get given to us timely, we can look at, and for the people to get full responses to any inquiries that we have of questions, so we have full and complete cooperation with our auditors. You know, that's, to me, that's the main thing within that letter on that. Does anyone have any questions for me whatsoever as a result of the audit? Well, if you look at it later and you have any questions, the phone number is on our opinion letter on the first one. Feel free to give us a call, but we appreciate the opportunity to serve y'all.
We appreciate what you do, and it's always good to get a clean, unmodified, to hear it actually, but I'm not surprised. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now recognize Mary Brown, principal at Wittenberg Elementary, for an update on the love of school.
Okay. Good evening. It's nice to see you. It's nice to be here, girls. You did a great job. Thanks for representing Wittenberg well. So, we last saw you in March, and it's now just September, so some things have changed, but not a lot. So, we're just going to kind of go from the ending of last year, kind of towards the end of the beginning of this year. And, oops. Okay. And this is one, our theme for this year. When you enter this loving school, consider yourself one of the special members of our extraordinary family. So, we are really working on being a family this year and really acknowledging that. So, welcome to Wittenberg. One of the things I saw somewhere on Facebook that somebody sent me was hopes and dreams, and hopes and dreams for our students. So, we had our staff write out their hopes and dreams for this coming year to really start the year with a positive energy, and we put that at our open house. So, once we've talked about the staff writing, we thought, well, hey, what about our students? So, then the students wrote out their hopes and dreams, too, and that's on the wall, and it's interesting to see. We all are very positive, want to have a great year and grow and have friends. And then, one other thing we thought, and this is kind of collaborative effort, was we're missing a key player. How about our parents? So, at open house night, we had our parents come in, and they wrote out their hopes and dreams with their children. So, we're hoping that we have a very collaborative effort this year in educating these children, because it takes all of us. It takes the teachers, it takes, it takes the families, it takes the community, and that's how we started our school year this year. Okay, we want to look at a little data. We had some issues on our buses. I think that's pretty common for most schools. All our reportable offenses are on school grounds. More boys and girls were involved in discipline incidents, and PBS continues to be a strong motivator. We had a significant amount of kindergarten issues last year, and we were kind of, hmm, it kind of took us by surprise. So, we started with the MTSS process with some EDRC monitoring, and we were very successful with that last year. And it was, we all learned a lot. I probably learned more than anybody about how to work with kids that come in that have some learning differences and behavior differences and what we anticipated, because some of these things are changing since I started at Wittenberg, and learning how to cope with them while honoring the children and their families and where they're coming from has been something that we're all evolving with, but this year, it started off really, really well. Oops. Okay. Okay, we agree nine points in our math proficiency, so we're super excited about that. Math is something we'd always struggled with, and we attribute that to Engage New York and really focusing on that, and our instructional coach, Melinda Glenn, really helped with that. Unfortunately, we went down some in our reading, but we've got some things coming up that we're going to hit reading hard with, essentially vocabulary. We worked, we worked well in science, and our school composite went up for four-point score, so we're pretty tickled about that. Our report card grade was a C. We don't want to leave it as a C, but last year, our math was a D, and that rose to a C this year, so we're pretty, again, we're very excited about that growth. Some of the things we're looking at for improving is we're continuing math with Engage New York. It's not perfect, but it has really helped us, and it's given our teachers a framework to go by, and they're sticking to that, and it's, it's working really, really well. And this year, since they know the vocabulary and they know the language and the steps going from grade level to grade level, will have exposure and experience with it, we really feel like it's going to be even more effective this year. Teachers are getting some funds to buy some manipulatives, and then we've hired two Title I interventionists, and they're going to target Tier II students to help them in the areas that they're struggling in math. The reading, we've looked at sort of specific issues. One of the things is vocabulary. So, we're going to work on a program called, I call it a flock of vocabulary, but really it's vocabulary, and that's something that we're going to purchase, and the teachers have been using. They've tried some trial basis last year, so we're going to try that this year. And another thing we're starting on called Read the School, which is putting up words around the school, like on doors that say portal, ingress, egress, different words so that those vocabulary, those synonyms kind of become second nature. So, we're working on that. And again, we have intervention, intervention is targeting Tier II students. And science, we're going to continue. Last year, when I talked to you in March, we talked a lot about STEM, and we're going to continue with our STEM activities, and we're going to, again, continue with some interactive video conferencing from the North Carolina School of Science and Math, so we're pretty excited about that. And Ms. Orin, our counselor, last year, she had a STEM career day, and I talked about that last, last year as well, and we're going to do that again this coming year. One thing we did that was fun is we decorate. I don't know if you have been in our lobby. Our lobby was very, very, very pitiful, and those of you who have been there are aware of that. So, this was very pitiful, and we decorated, and it's really caused, actually, a lot of joy, and people find it very homey and very welcoming that goes with our family thing coming up that we're doing this year, so that's, some of that's been neat. Okay, another thing I want to talk to you about is Wildcats Care. We've raised over $1,000 for our sister school in Louisiana for the flooding that they suffered. So, we have $1,000 we're going to be sending to Louisiana to help those schools, and I know you've seen those videos on TV, but that's something we're very proud of. We're the only school in Alexander County that completely funds our own backpack program, and that's another thing, and we've been doing that for years, but I want to repeat that again, because I cannot be more prouder, more proud of our community. We had a family that suffered a fire this summer, and we've supported that family, and we had a teacher who had, who had moved on to a different county. She had moved, and that teacher has a very serious case of breast cancer, and we have been supporting that, that teacher as well. So, I just want you all to know how much Wittenberg teachers and staff and community care about each other and the larger community as well. Professional development this year. Google for education certification. All teachers are going to get Google One Education Certification this year, and it's going to go throughout the year. It's based on different units. I went to some PD this summer in Wilkes County, and it's, they're going to do a unit every two weeks, and they can get help where they don't, they don't, if they don't need it, they don't have to have it. So, that's sort of self-paced. If they need support, they can have it, and they take a test, and then they get a little Google Certified Teacher thing to add by their name on their email. So, but this, one of the reasons we decided to go with this was the practicality. We're using Google, and it just sort of came at us, and we're kind of hit and miss and pecking our way through, and this is going to be more of a systematic approach to make sure we get the most from it. Celebrations. Last year, we started with the Wittenberg Outstanding Wildcat Wow Awards, and we're going to continue that, and we look at attendance and specific, and honor roll, good grades, things like that, and teachers recognize each other, and teachers recognize specific students, and that's been a really positive change since last year that we're going to continue with. We tried a new thing today, and we were going to try it here with you, but we decided in the interest of time, we would not, but it's called Breakout EDU, and you look at data and you unlock locks, and it's actually a lot of fun, and the teachers did that at our opening session, and then we've got some pictures of students trying it this year and teachers as well. But it continues with the four Cs, which I've talked about for several years now, which is collaboration, communication, creativity, and critical thinking. Just trying to remind everybody, those are the skills that kids need when they go to high school and when they graduate from high school, so we try to start with that, and we are starting with that in the elementary level. A new thing that I am super excited about, and I want to thank Dr. Hilton, is what we have now is a child and family support team, and we talked about those kinders earlier. They're coming from some environments that we're not familiar with ourselves, and so it's, sometimes it's hard to support those children in the best way, not that we're not trying, but we don't know exactly what to do. So, now, we have a child and family support team. We have our counselor, Ms. Orin's here, our nurse is on it, and our social worker is on it, and they're going to, the counselor supports a child at school, the nurse provides medical support, and the social worker is going to work on attendance and family support. And we truly believe that this, these three people, this team, is going to help our students and families in a greater way than we have been able to in the past, and it's going to free up some of my time so that I can focus more on curriculum and different things around the school, because I did spend a lot of time last year in a lot of those roles with super help from the people I had last year. I think this is going to be a really positive change for the, for the schools that have this. And last thing I wanted to leave you with is, it is great to be a Wittenberg Wildcat, and if you get my phone calls, you know exactly what that's all about. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions?
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
With regard to the kinders, you mentioned that you did MTSS process, that process with EDRC monitoring, and I'm sorry, but I don't know what that means.
Multiple Tier System of Support.
The EDRC piece.
Okay.
It's on the computer, and we can go in and look at what the behaviors are that we want to try to put that child with, but we need to find out what's causing that behavior. Something that we can say, okay, if it happens at this time of the day or in this section of the day, is there something going on during that time that we need to target? And so, it also looks at some causes to do to rate the child, and first thing, it's not just all negative.
Okay.
And another cool thing about it is that the parents, they can get a text now if they choose to. We can print it out and send home to the parents, and also get the comment placed for the teacher's comment and get more details about how they support the kids. So, it targets the community.
Well, and it provides some data, and we can get some graphs and things like that. Ms. Orin, sign. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good to see you. Thank you.
I would recognize Teresa Smakes, Director of AIG for 2015-16 Accountability Results.
Hi.
Hi.
I am so glad to be here tonight. I want you all to know, this is like my absolute favorite day of the year, because I get to come here and brag about all these wonderful people in Alexander County and what they've accomplished. In all the years I have been doing this, it's always good things to find and look at, and it's fun. Sometimes I think they miss me, because I'm digging through all of the stuff, but it's really fun to keep finding things. I'll run into Dr. Hefner's office, look what we did, look what I found. So, it's really a joy for me to be able to do this. I wanted to start out tonight with some, usually, I just present the ready results, but I wanted to kind of let you know, and Mary set me up for it wonderfully, all the different data we look at, and if I And if I sit here and shared everything Mary looked at just to choose those improvement strategies, we would be here for days. But I just kind of thought you all might want to see a little of it. And one of the things that this year we have are teacher working conditions. Those are only given over two years. And the last time that we did the teacher working condition survey, Dr. Hethner was not even superintendent. So that tells you how long in between. This year, when, it was the beginning of this year in the spring of 2016. Overall, we improved in the two overall questions and we're over 90% this year. One is my school is a good place to work and learn. And one is at this school, we utilize the results from the 2014 North Carolina Teaching Working Condition Survey as a tool for school improvement. And we had actually taken the old survey and went through it and saw where we were low. And we really targeted those things in these two years. So I think it showed. This one, and it's, you can't hard read it, but you all will get a copy of this. I kind of pulled these. We did something with the principals when they were working on their school improvement plans. And Dr. Curry had found some research that directly correlated some of these questions to student achievement. And it was kind of interesting to us, some of the things that correlated. Feeling safe, if a teacher's felt safe in their environment, directly correlated to the student achievement. And you can look in the green on all of those, we had improved from the past year. And the two that are red are in managing student conduct, school administration consistently enforces rules, and the faculty work in a school environment that is safe. But the previous year, that had been 98 and it went down to 96.2. So I don't think we went down too much. But both of those were very low. And the other one was 82 and we went down to 80. But it, it's very interesting to look at these. And like I said, there's a whole bunch of questions. If you ever want to see them all, I have all of that data. And the last one I kind of pulled, I just thought it sort of pulled everything together. This one talks about our leadership and what teachers feel they do in all the different areas. They have sufficient access to appropriate instructional materials. And this one I included because I thought it was interesting. Teachers have sufficient access to digital content and resources. First time the question was ever on there. Because it's never been anything that came up in the past. Digital resources, like these things that they're using to track their behaviors. They weren't there. We also didn't have that cost before, but there are some really great things out there. The next one I wanted to look at was attendance. And we had pulled this, Dr. Curry had pulled it to, works with some people. And I found it very interesting that last year, our attendance, our lowest school was 93.7 average daily attendance in the percentage. So I thought that was extremely good, that every one of our schools were over 93%. And since this is National Attendance Month, I thought maybe that, we'd like to look at that. And now the ready. And I wanted to talk about, the ready began fall of 2012. That was right when I had left. And Dr. Hethner and I had spent a year preparing for Common Core. And we began Common Core that first year. Our accountability had not caught up to that. So that year, the testing did not have number five. We only had one, two, three, and four. So I went back in the data, starting in 1314, to see how we've done for those three years. And I found some pretty neat results. One thing I wanted to talk about was growth. I want to look at our growth of those three years, but I wanted to kind of remind you the difference in achievement and growth. Achievement is the proficiency. It's percent of kids that passed with a three, four, or five. If you look for our economically disadvantaged kids, achievement goes down in economically disadvantage. But a reason I think growth is so important, if you look at growth, growth, it doesn't matter how economically disadvantaged you are. It's a matter of where you come in at and how far you grow them. So I feel growth is one of the most important things. And from 2013 to 1516, so that's three years worth of data, in 1314, six of our schools did not meet growth. And that was the first year of that new test and the brand new accountability. Two met and two exceeded. So only 40% of our schools met or exceeded that year. But then the next year, in 1415, we flipped the met and the not met. And two of our schools did not meet, six met and two still exceeded. So those two still stayed up there. So 80% met or exceeded. This past year, we still have 80% that met or exceeded, but we moved one more from that met category up to the exceeded. So 30% of our schools exceeded this year are three. So we have made progress every year. If you look at academic progress in school performance, remember level one and two, we don't want, those are the bad ones. Level three is okay. And, but levels four and five are called college and career ready. And those are the two we're looking for the most. And the new accountability, of course, they're going to change it. You, you aren't surprised, right? So they're going to change it coming up and they're looking at that now with the E S S A. And they are considering saying only fours and fives and getting rid of the G L P. So we will see how that goes. But if so, I looked at G L P, why is it not working? There it goes. And over the three years again, and over those three years, we have gained on our major things every year. For all of our E O Gs and Cs, from last year to this year, we went up point eight. Over the three years, we have raised it 2.4. For E O Cs, last year to this year, we went up 1.1 percentage. This year, over the all three years, 4.1. And all E O Gs, point seven, and over all three years, two. So I found it very interesting that we have grown all three years in the major areas. And if you look at, if they were just saying, okay, only fours and fives are going to count, we still grew all three years. And we actually grew more over the three years in C C R. So we have been learning how to get more of those fours and fives. Over the three years, we grew 3.7, 3.4, and then 3.9 in all E O Gs. So I found that interesting. Now, the individual schools, and Mary's already given you a little bit of hers. Remember that in the new accountability school performance grade, that's the big grade that everyone gets. Achievement is the proficiency. How many of our kids passed with three fours or fives? And that counts 80% of that grade. And right now, the threes do count. The second is the growth score. And that'll tell us, there's an index that tells us that that only counts 20% of that grade. And then the grade, it's just kind of like we do, except our high school is on a 10-point scale and we're on as a district, and our school's a 15-point scale. So you can get an 85 and still have an A. But unfortunately, at our high school, you have to get a 90. The graph at the bottom kind of shows you the index for the growth. Growth, the way they do it, the growth composite that you get does not mean, let's say you've got a 93%, that 93% of your kids grew. It actually is a way that a computer program that will not give me the formula, figures out and converts this index score into a point system on a hundred point scale. So the index score is important. Zero on that score means you got a year's growth. So zero's good. At least two above zero and higher is the exceeded. And if you go at least two below and lower, then you do not meet. And this is our schools. And I will tell you which ones it is, if I can turn my page. Obviously Bethlehem's at the top. These are just the elementaries. The bright blue lines are this year. The green cells are an area where a school improved from last year. Last year, when I gave you this very similar graph, Sugarloaf had raised their C to a B. And that was our only elementary B. They maintained that B, but the good news is two more of our schools, both Bethlehem and Taylorsville, raised their scores to Bs. So we now have three Bs. And if you look, everyone else maintained their C. So we do not have overall anything below a C here. Now remember that achievement counts 80% of the grade. And last year, we, at the end of our thing, we talked about compared to the state and closing the gap. And if you look at our math achievement here, you're going to kind of get a preview of when that slide comes up, what we did. Wittenburg's math achievement, I have increasing 10%. Taylorsville's increased 15%. And when you look at growth, four, five of our seven schools grew in their growth. But in that composite score, four of those grew over 10 points. With Taylorsville growing, it's 33 point something, I can't, but 33.1, which is an incredible amount of growth. And remember back to the economically disadvantaged, you can say schools are economically disadvantaged and you can't grow them. We can. We can grow any school. So, and all of ours was, five out of our seven showed major growth. So that is really, really good. Our middle schools both maintained their Cs. And East met and West maintained their exceeded. And then our high school. Our high school, when I say maintained, they scored the exact same performance score as last year. So they got a 76 last year, a 76 this year. They have their B. They still exceeded in growth and their growth actually went up slightly. And our cohort graduation rate went down point seven points. So it did go down, but it didn't go down a huge amount. When we look at our comparison to the states and the other districts, this one I put up, this is the comparison from last year, 1415. Notice the two areas, we did not come close. We were negative 1.7 behind the state in math C C R, the fours and fives, and negative 1.5 in math G L P, which are the threes, fours, and fives. This year, those are both green. We did, not only did we meet them, we exactly met them in G L P and we went a little bit above them in C C R. And if you notice, the one that's not still green is reading, it is negative point five behind, and it was only point five ahead last year. The good news is, one of the reasons I think our math scores have went incredibly high was we talked about meeting and doing this last year. And I told you that the teachers with, led by Dr. Curry and her coaches, had spent an incredible amount of time that year doing maths for math. We implemented that last year and it was incredible, the time they spent doing that and do, and the Engage New York, like Mary said, Wittenburg and Taylorsville both did that very well. And they're still lurking at it and making it better. And when we would do curriculum meetings at the schools, we as administrators and our principals would go around to the classrooms. And that's what we looked at, that math being done in those classrooms, individualized learning. And I think that really shows in our scores. The good news is our reading scores are still right level. Well, last year, guess what they worked on? E L A and reading maps. And so this year, we're implementing those. They're going through the same processes and I think it will show next year in our reading scores. Comparison to surrounding counties in our districts. I always love this one because I go to every district around us and I look at what their overall score was. And then I get very excited and run into Dr. Hethner's office and tell her we beat them off. We did again this year. We beat them all in all subjects and E O C subjects. And then one new one this year that I added because I had not realized it and it was coming up this year. This year, our A C T scores were the highest out of all our surrounding districts. And what that is, that's what the state uses to decide if our kids are college and career ready. And it's 66.6% of our juniors last year met what UNC's minimum requirement would be to go to their colleges. So I think that's a very big thing to be proud of. And I also put in the percent participation. In the past years, we've had A M Os, remember those annual measurable objectives that we didn't really quite understand, but we looked at? Because of that accountability changing and it's kind of in the middle, they're not doing those this year or next year, except for one. And it's 95% participation. And when the scores came, I'm like, oh, we have 100. I know that. We go out and make sure all of our kids are tested and that everyone is done. And I just assumed everyone did. But when I looked at the surrounding counties, two of the counties didn't even come close to the 95% and one was 94.1. So that means they didn't even test all of their students and we still did really well. And we tested everybody. So I thought that was kind of important to show you. One more thing I wanted to look at, these are the surrounding districts' low performing schools. And the name you will not find up there is ours. Not one of our schools was low performing this year. And every one of our surrounding, in the counties and all their little places have at least one, except Newton Conover. We had none. So I thought that was really good. It also saves a whole lot of paperwork and trouble. And then last year, I think I ended with this one. And so I'm going to end with it again this year. Last year, I was so proud, we had a place where we were in the top 10 in the state out of 115 counties. And we had that many in the yellow that were in the top 25. This year, we had that many in the top 25 in the state. And two, our biology fours and fives, and our biology's three fours and fives are seventh in our state. That's out of 115 districts, including those big ones that spend all the money and do all the things. Our A C T score though, I think I may be the most proud of that one. Because again, that's our kids that are college and career ready. And we were 20th in the state of North Carolina. And I think that's a huge accomplishment. Again, not everything's perfect in our scores, but we spend a lot of time going through here and using things and looking where we need to improve and putting those in order. And I think that's why we improve every single year. I have a whole lot more data, but I figure y'all don't want to spend that much time here. And I know someone wants to go to a ballgame. So, but if you want to see something more, come by. You can't come but in twos. No, you can come in threes. But I'll be glad to show you anything you'd want and look through it. Are there any questions?
I have one.
Yes.
This week.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have the availability to email me that slideshow?
Yes, actually what I did was I emailed it to Ms. Watts earlier and she should be able to put it, it was while you were in here, because I finished it. I was putting last minute touches and checking things. And, and she can also put it up on your thing. I'll directly mail it to you, but I'll have her, she'll put it up on your, I just didn't have it ready by then because I didn't get, it wasn't all released. And then it took me, I've been in data to where the past two weeks, she came to my office, my desk looked like it was not pretty. Y'all would have been very proud.
She almost said it looked like Dr. Hethner.
She almost said that. I did almost say it.
I saw her look at me.
Because I told her that today. I said, gosh, my desk is starting to look like yours because she's always working so hard.
I have a question about.
Yes, ma'am.
The teacher working conditions. Do all the teachers take that?
And they are all asked to take it. And I have the percentage, it was 90 something. It's on the top of that.
90 is in the high school and all of our other nine schools met 100%.
Went 100. So in 14, it was 98.64% took it. And in 16, 98.69%. So, and only those were, it was a few at the high school, I think, that we missed.
I had a question there also. Is, is that available for all staff? Just certified staff or is it also for administrative and non-certified?
The teacher working conditions are only certified teachers. The teacher working conditions are only certified teachers. And then there's a principal's working conditions. Or there's going to be, is that in the new accountability or am I forgetting that?
I'm assuming they don't have one right now.
Yeah, they're, they're talking about a principal's one. But as far as I know, the state or the feder, the teacher's working condition state, I don't think they have one for other personnel. We could do one.
Well, I'm just curious. It wasn't a loaded question by any means.
No, but I was just saying it'd be nice to find out. We could do that. Google forums, Mariel teachers.
Just curious.
Well, I for one am very proud of our schools.
Yes, they're awesome.
Those results look wonderful. And when I look at Little Alexander County compared to the bigger systems surrounding us, my heart just explodes with pride. I do have a question though.
Yes ma'am.
And I don't want to put you on the spot, but do you know the current status, you know, the growth in achievement? You said it was 80% achievement, 20% growth. I know there had been some talk in the state of changing that so that the growth counts for more. Because I'm a big proponent-
Oh, me too.
-of growth. Not that achievement's not important, but growing those children. And is, has there been any change in that that are you aware of?
No, it, it did come up again this year when they were doing all of that manipulating and the budget was coming out and they wanted it to go 50/50. And it was actually in one of them and it was one of those things that got knocked down and didn't pass. So I, I think it will come up again. But with the whole accountability model changing, it's according to whether they changed that piece and what all they changed. But, and, and that's why I showed you that graph. I think growth is definitely, I mean, when we bring out the teacher, that, that stuff is not out yet, individual teacher growth. When we do the teacher effectiveness, I'm going to show you, you know, how a teacher can have kids that didn't get proficiency. They can have a whole class of kids where none of them made a three, but, and grew incredibly. And you can do that at a school, you can do it as, you can have a school that has great proficiency and doesn't have very much growth. And so those things, it's really important, I think, that the kids grow almost more than that they all make proficient. And if they're all proficient, but they all dropped, that's not good either. And so I think growth is very important.
I would love to see it 50/50.
I'd like to see it back the other way, 80, 20, 80 growth, 20 proficiency, but I'd take the 50/50. Are there any other questions?
I have a question. Could you go back to the school performance, the growth?
He's going to have to pull it back up. I've got the here though, you won't ask.
Well, my, my question is while he's going back to that.
The each school or which one you?
The each school, yeah.
It's 16. I don't know if you have a number like I do.
While he's going back. Can we put this on our website where the general public can see this, this slideshow?
I don't see, and it's released to the public now that we were waiting kind of to. You are, but I don't say why not?
Okay. All our, of course, you know, we're, we're proud of our administrators. So they're, they're kind of like the, the officers if this were a military type setup. But, but we all know that they plan for executing maneuvers, et cetera. But, but we know it's the sergeants that enlisted folk are far more numerous and, and they're the boots on the ground. To have 30, in excess of what, 30%, I'm, I'm looking at Taylorsville.
Taylorsville was in growth? See, I'll have my, well, I can put my glasses on, but I had to from there, but I have it here. I think it was 33.8.
Okay, okay. My question is, is we can't continually expect that type of, of growth year to year to year. There, that's not, that's not.
You have to kind of be low anyway to get that type of growth. Although Wittenberg raised theirs by 23.1.
Which is great.
Those were the top two.
What I hope that our parents and our community will take from this is, is there's one, there's one sale in this entire presentation, a comparison that's missing. And that is the amount of funding per district. You know, we, we talk about our competitive scores and those competitive numbers are brought about by our teachers and our principals, our support staff and our administration, and moreover, our students. And we know full well that we're in the top 25% as far as systems in the entire state. But it would be nice to also plug in a funding matrix to see, you know, the correlation between performance and funding at the, at the district level. But-
At each district like, like those six?
It would be hard, no, I'm talking about our neighbors, you know, everybody always-
So I said our neighbors?
Everybody wants to keep up with the Joneses, so.
This man happy might be able to find me the financing part and I would-
At some point.
Could attach it to it.
But-
A comparison of the local appropriation, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, yes.
Because we all get the per pupil-
Right.
-the same amount throughout the state. But you're talking about the local-
The local.
Correct.
We can do that.
But, but I, I'm exceedingly thankful for our, our staff. I just reiterate what Sally said. And, you know, our high school's a melting pot. It's actually a city unto itself. The population out here almost mirrors that of the town of Taylorsville. So you imagine when you bring all the students in, you're past 1,500, then add the staff, then add support staff. And the performance speaks for itself. So-
And next year though, you're going to have to give them a little bit of a break because theirs may be slightly different. Remember we stopped 57 of their students.
Right.
That, and 90% of them are going to be first year college and over half of them are AIG. So that's how many of our AIG students have never had parents that went to college. I found that really a great opportunity for those kids.
I appreciate the data. I hope our citizens will take time to, to look through that. And if they have a question, please call, call and ask somebody. You know, you can be overwhelmed by all the, all the data, but.
But it would be nice to listen, because the state just releases it in a spreadsheet. Now, once our NC report card comes out, it will be there. Now, it won't be ours compared to each other, but each schools will be on their report card. And that'll be released October 18th is when the state releases that. And then it's a little bit nicer, but right now out there, it's not, it's fun to, to go through. Anything else?
One more question. I see where you like to compare our neighbors and that's cool because I like to do it also. Do you have any way to track how our children, when they're graduating, if they are moving on to college? What percentage versus our neighbors?
Only way we would have, because we talked about that before, is kind of like word of mouth. Like I can tell you my son did well. And I can see, I've seen some of his friends, some I didn't even realize. Becky, give me Becky's last name. She works in technology now and her daughter graduated with Chase.
Rosenbaum.
Rosenbaum, thank you. And our children graduated the same year. And so we were kind of talking about, we'd look, we're looking at that and I said, I wish we knew. And we were just going through his class and there were more than we knew of that had four years degrees, have graduated in the past year. So, but unless they just, you know, called back to the school and said it and that kind of data isn't very, you know.
Leah Wiley was able to compile a little bit of information from this past year for me. But the problem is Marty, that we don't have a specific type of information that's requested from each school system. So what you have to do is rely on your counseling department at each high school to just do what Teresa said, track it the best they can. But Leah has put together some information with me that we will share.
I realize there'd be a margin of error there.
It's very interesting when you start, because there's more of them out there than I think I realized.
And some children report something when they graduate, but then that really doesn't happen. And it's hard to follow up on whether it happened or not, so.
Well, four years later, they, they're not really looking back at us. Hopefully they're looking longer at their futures, so. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good work.
Renee Mead is going to give us an update on the Telephone Consumer Protection Act.
Okay, this is not going to be as exciting as it was. I'm sorry. I do want to talk to you a little bit about the Telephone Consumer Protection Act and how that applies to our school system. And most of you are aware that we use a parent notification system that does automated calls. The system that we currently use is called School Messenger. TCPA was created in 1991 and it was created to prevent consumers from getting unwanted pre-recording calls. So it's actually a good thing, but it does apply to us because we use that type of a system. In July of 2015 and again in August of 2016, the SCC provided guidance for the schools to understand a little bit more how this applies to us and the changes that we need to make. These updates contain notable changes that affect our schools. And the new SCC ruling gives schools clarification on TCPA restrictions indicating that calls and text messages that are made to mobile phones for purposes of the school must be closely related to the mission of the school. Our landline and mobile numbers that go into the system where our parents provide those numbers, those aren't parsed out. So whenever numbers go in, they're all, the system sees them all the same. So we don't know if it's a mobile number or a landline. And there is no way for us to parse those out. So what that means for us is that every call that we make to every person we make it to, those calls need to be considered mobile calls. So we will know, that prevents us from being able to continue making calls on behalf of other agencies and organizations like we have in the past. Now, we haven't done that a lot, but on occasion we would send out reminder calls for agencies and organizations for opportunities that affected our students, but we will not be able to do that with the new system. The clarification also provided schools with more flexibility to communicate what might be considered non-emergency situations such as teacher workdays, school events and activities. This was in addition to situations that have always been covered under the existing TCPA exemption, exemption for emergency communications without getting explicit permission from parents in advance for the calls or texts or prior express consent. Essentially what that means is we would have had to send out more paperwork at the beginning of the school year for parents to sign and send back saying that it was okay for us to make calls in all of these variety of areas. The ruling or the clarification indicated that we can make calls if it's closely related to the school, if it's about events or activities within the school. But, and we've always had the permission if it's an emergency. So the exclusion from the prior express consent requirement for calls and texts made for emergency purposes was even defined more in this most recent ruling that now it includes weather closures, incidents of threat and/or imminent danger to the school due to fire, dangerous persons, health risks, toxic skills. It gave a pretty inclusive list. Also unexcused absences, which is a call that, a type of call that we make. Schools and organizations are also responsible to ensure that calls are not made to unintended numbers. And as you could imagine, that, that can be very difficult. But as a school system, we plan to make every effort to ensure that numbers that we contact are intended numbers. And here are the steps that we plan to take and are already taking to be in compliance. Number one, we will limit our calls to only calls that relate to the mission of our schools. We will ensure that when requests are made to remove numbers out of the system, that that is done promptly. We'll provide multiple opportunities to update numbers in our system. We'll make sure that our schools are sending out reminders to update those numbers throughout the school year in their newsletters, parent meetings. We'll even make calls and say, you know, this is a reminder to update all your numbers. And we are also in the process of adding emails to all of the Power School accounts where parents have provided those emails. And that will allow us to use another product that School Messenger provides for us for free. We like free. And it's called Info Center. And Info Center is an app that you can get on your phone or have on your computer where the parents can go in and update their information manually. And that helps us keep it up to date. Now, looking forward, it will also provide the availability for them to indicate the type of calls that they would want to receive. So that could open back up some doors later on, but not yet. Just for your information, we have five categories of call types that we do currently make. We have school hours emergency, non-school hours emergency, absence calls, general calls, and then also delinquent account calls that are done through the school nutrition department. So I have been working closely with the technology department, with our principals and with our data managers. And we are working on this and hope to have everything finalized soon. I hope that you saw the frequently asked questions in your packet. But if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer those now.
Do you envision a day where parents could say opt into the cell phone or the text method instead of the home phone robo-call?
We have that currently.
To opt out totally of the-
To opt out for a call, for a mobile call or a landline call. And the functionality that they will have in the system will also allow for us to change those indicators where like the school, school hours emergency, non-school hours emergency. So we could also add another category that might be like community events or opportunities. And if they check that, then we could also put some of those back out there. But that's kind of in the future.
Is that after Renee, we get the email addresses from the parents and have those entered before we would even have the ability for them to do that?
It is. And that, we did alert our data managers before school started so they could go ahead and make sure when they got those, the parent forms in, that they added those. Because in the past, you know, there's a huge amount of data that comes in and if it's not, if it wasn't deemed usable, then it may not have been put into the system at that point. And so we notified the data managers that we were definitely going to be using those email addresses when possible.
As far as data management staff, how, how many folks do you have?
There's one for each school. We've got one here at the central office.
And they have all been made 12 months straight.
And our student population's 5,000 and you have two parents or you have step parents. That's a lot of data to enter. But I'm certain that there's some parents in our school system that have a child of elementary, middle and high school. And sometimes those exciting robo-calls or general calls, you know. Multiply that times 180 or, I, I know it's not every day, but you know.
It can be cumbersome on a parent. But I will say that when we're able-
Not that I would know about this.
When we're able to, and a parent can opt, they can just get either a text message on their phone or in their email. And so they can skim it, delete it, read it, whatever they choose to do.
It's a lot of data for a very, just a handful of people. And, and we're just talking about phone calls right now. We're not talking about all the other items we deal with.
And I will say it was, you know, a difficulty that we constantly deal with in entering information is if you have a student that has, both parents have custody and they have multiple telephone numbers and email addresses for emergency. This week it's this parent and this week it's that parent. So we do have a lot to, those data managers have to deal with a lot.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And we've now recognized Dr. Heffler for the superintendent's report.
This is going to be lengthy. I wanted to let you know we did upload it to your agenda. So hopefully that will also help because I'm going to be sharing a lot of dates and events. And if you just, you can either open it and go through it with me right now on your board agenda or you can do that later. But the first thing I wanted to talk about is the District School Board Association meeting is scheduled for September 28th in Allegheny County. Sally Hardis is the only member who has expressed an intention to attend this meeting with me. That certainly can change. If you want to attend, let me know by tomorrow afternoon so we can get you registered and make travel arrangements. Since the meeting begins at 4:00 that afternoon, we're going to leave the central office about 2:30. And again, that's on September 28th. The second bullet, Ron Collier reported that his team of engineers from DPI will be in our system on October 25th and 26th. If they need a third day, that will be the 27th to complete the consolidation study that has been requested through DPI. It will take approximately four weeks after the visit to compile the data and provide our board with a report. But please note, the study is on the calendar and we're excited about that. Third bullet, the date for the quarterly meeting with the chair and vice chair of the Board of Commissioners has been changed to Tuesday, September 20th. That originally was scheduled for Monday, the 19th. And we have recently made that change due to a conflict with one of the commissioners. But we are also changing the meeting location to the county administration building. We'll be meeting in the basement of that building. Bullet number four, our budget committee met last week to discuss our state and local allotments. Another budget meeting will be scheduled to finalize the overall budget in order to have it approved at our October board meeting. A date has also been set for the thank you reception. Our community partners will be highlighted and thanked with a reception and a brief ceremony on Monday, October 17th, beginning at 6 o'clock in the high school cafeteria. Presentations will be made to those in attendance following the reception and we're going to make the presentations in the auditorium. A formal invitation is forthcoming. Renee Mead is working on that. And that will be emailed to all of, all of our board members. Please mark your calendar and make plans to attend that very important event. Wanted to let you know that our membership numbers on the 10th day of school look good. It appears that as of day 10, we have 4,931 students enrolled and that does not include our preschool students. We ended the ninth month last year with 4,910 students. And you can do the math. That's a net increase of 21 students for the system. If these numbers hold true through the 20th day of school, we will not have to revert any money back to- any money back to the state. So I would ask you to keep your fingers crossed that we keep those numbers. Board of Education training has been scheduled with Chris Campbell on October 20th, from 12 until 2 in this room. Lunch will be provided beginning at 11:30. And again, that's very important. It's our annual training, and I need you to mark your calendars with that date and the time. Bullet number eight, a date has been set to tour the CTE house project. You know that Raimi Robinson made a presentation to us during the summer, and we talked about scheduling a visit to the house project. We are going to do that on Wednesday, September 28th. We're going to meet at the central office at 10 in order to be able to see the students working on the house. And Susan Gant, she clarified that students will be there during the visit, so we'll get to watch them a little bit, too. I have approved the annual fall canned food drive with the Alexander County Christian Crisis Center. Schools will be contacted by Debbie Hollingsworth about that annual event. And I thought this was interesting. Currently, with five food pantries in Alexander County, the Christian Crisis Center is distributing approximately 50,000 pounds of food each month to our county's families. So Debbie, you know, stresses that these canned food drives, they do help a lot. An appraisal of the old Wittenberg property has been scheduled for October. Chris Miller with Miller and Associates will conduct that commercial appraisal. Thank you, Marty, for giving me that name and contact information. Tomorrow, Dr. June Adkinson, state superintendent, will be visiting Taylorsville Elementary as part of the Give Five, Read Five program. She's going to be presenting the school with 400 books, and all board members are invited to attend that special event. If you will be there about 1:30, you'll get to see everything. So I'm really looking forward to that.
And that's in the gym?
Um, Sally, I'm not sure I would assume it's in the gym. I can't imagine it being anywhere else, but I'll clarify that, let you all know in the morning exactly where to be at 1:30. The Fall Law Conference is scheduled for October 12th, 13th, and 14th in Asheville. Board Chair Karen Brixey and Vice Chair Scott Bowman are making plans to attend. The School Board Association Annual Conference for Board Member Development is scheduled for November 16, 17, and 18 at the Sheraton Greensboro at Four Seasons. We have had a group to attend the past two years. I would ask you to consider attending this conference and let me know if you're interested just as soon as possible. Ms. Smick's mentioned that attendance awareness month, awareness month is being recognized this month. It's a nationwide event recognizing the connection between school attendance and academic achievement. We're starting the school year by laying out expectations for the coming year, which is a perfect time to begin to develop a culture of attendance. Kids who miss too much school in pre-K and kindergarten are less likely to be reading in the third grade. Makes it much harder to learn in the years that follow also. Studies show that 75% of students who are chronically absent in sixth grade will drop out of high school, and students who are chronically absent in high school are 7.4 times more likely to drop out of school. And we see that right here in Alexander County. Let's do what we can to turn around chronic absences in our schools and help kids be in school every day. I wanted to announce the first annual family Halloween party that's being held at the auditorium on October 29th. That event begins at 5 o'clock. Crafts, concessions, trunk or treat, and a movie, Hotel Transylvania, will be shown at 7 o'clock in the auditorium. Admission is $3 per person, and children five and under get in free. And then the last thing I want to share is that Renee Mead, our public information officer, is sharing something called Friday 4-1-1 with all staff every Friday afternoon. This weekly communication contains information such as fundraisers. And an example of last week's was the fundraiser being held for Ron Turner at Friendship Lutheran Church this Saturday. Various other promotions are also being advertised as far as things being offered to school system employees. If you, as board members, want to be included in the weekly 4-1-1 notification, please send a request to Renee Mead, and she can make that happen. Do you have any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Sharon Mahaffey for proposed second reading of Policy 9030, Facility Construction.
If you remember from last time, Policy 9030 is being changed because of a change in the legislation of how change orders to construction projects must be reported to the board. When the policy committee met, well, first of all, the School Boards Association revised the policy from last time. I think they have made it a much more manageable policy. It's much more clearly written, and it's taken out some strenuous requirements that were really not a part of the law. The threshold for reporting a change order to a construction project would be $30,000. And as always, if the cost of, of the project is increased beyond what was approved in the original budget amendment, then that would have to come to the board for approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I would like to advise the board that the policy committee did meet, and we talked about this. And I believe everybody on the policy committee was very comfortable, and we did a thorough review. And I think that we, it's due to be, we're supposed to be implemented by October 1st. So even though it's a second reading, I would encourage everyone to ask questions and see if we can't take action on this particular policy tonight. Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve Policy 9030?
Motion to approve is presented.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? If I was in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. You can just, you're just right on up there, rolling into new business. Okay. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I, you are, you're right, and I'm wrong. I need to recognize Dr. Hilton. I apologize. We've got some federal programs, Title I, Title II, and Title III that we need to talk about.
Thank you. I come before you tonight, I need your approval for the federal programs. As time has gone on, if you've been on the board for a while, you've noticed, well, it used to be Title I by itself, it used to be Title II by itself, it used to be Title III by itself. Well, now they've rolled them all together. So when I put the information in and have to make a plan, they all go in at the same time. I do want to just briefly go over, and it is going to be brief, about what these things, each one is. Title I, I'm sure you're probably very familiar with. It is taken from the free and reduced lunch numbers. There is a formula that we, kind of like Ms. Smick so mentioned earlier, we're not exactly privy to the whole idea, but it has to do with numbers and EC numbers, poverty, and the whole bit rolled into one. And we are allotted an amount of money. And I wanted to particularly discuss with you how the money is being put to good use this year. And one thing you're probably going to hear a lot about this year is the social workers. I will say, I was sitting there thinking, this is, I think, the 11th day of school, and I have not received one call yet for a kindergartner that is out of control. Last year, my phone rang continually over, please help, what do we do? It just, I think the dynamics of the home and the family, it's just changing. And I think we have to be good stewards of our money and react to that. And I feel like we have a real student services department now. We have social workers, we have counselors, we were able to increase a nurse half a position. So that is to break down the barriers, barriers so the teachers can teach and so we can keep them in class. I think the district, there's Kathy Jones has been at the high school, my understanding is for about 15 years, and that is the only social worker that this county, the school system, has employed. So I saw an opportunity to be able to take some of the funding and to hire three social workers. They serve the top six highest free and reduced lunch elementary schools. And I'll say that's six, but Bethlehem, Bethlehem is around 38% free and reduced lunch right now. They have gone into targeted assistance, and that is basically targeting specific children. So the funds that Bethlehem receives now, they have to target with name attached who's going to be served. So, but we are going to take care of them. We're not leaving them totally out. But, so we have three that are split between sixth elementary. They serve two days at one, two days at another, and then they are required once a week to meet with the nurse and the counselor at each school. So they, that's the child and family support team. And so they can staff kids that have attendance problems, and it kind of helps before you get to the point of the student support team, it kind of like falls into what Ms. Briski was asking about, like NTSS. Before you start talking about academics, you've got to figure out why the kid's not in class, why they can't focus, and all those things. The social workers already, I know that the Stillwell had told me, she said, I don't know how, at this point, I ever lived without one. So I know they're doing good things out there. We are supporting eight classroom teachers throughout the elementary schools, 10 teacher assistants. Now, three of the teacher assistants are full-time in that pot. The others are being used, there were seven interventionists hired part-time to work in those schools to help with, like, kind of with the, with reading or math to help the kids that are on the different tiers through NTSS. Title I also supports professional development, there's instructional supplies, library books, and there is a parent involvement component that's required by the federal government. There's your free and reduced lunch numbers. Now, those were pulled from April the 1st, 2015. While those do look alarming, and sometimes, like when Dr. Heffner mentioned about the canned food, I'm really surprised sometimes that they're not higher. I think the families are so proud, and the churches do so much to support. That's what I encounter, that the numbers are not as high as you might even think. Taylorsville is 62.03%. They were in April, but through the formula of the CEP, they are counted as 100%. So every child there receives free breakfast and free lunch. And every child in Alexander County, of course, receives free breakfast. Title II. Title II is all about improving teacher quality. And you can also use that funding to teacher retainment and for recruitment. So we take that, and part of the amount that you see on there, that's a planning allotment, and some of that, probably around $150,000, was carryover. And that amount was also used to help support some teacher salaries to get schools started. We don't receive this money. We have to plan now, like you have to plan into the next year. So we have to have carryover to carry on. Title II also, to Dr. Griffin's office, we help support his job fairs and teacher recruitment, beginning teacher things that they do, and all of that. Like, these are very specific on how you can use all this funding, and one teacher has been paid this past year in Title II. Title III is what you might think of as ESL. Our ESL population in Alexander County has been declining. You can see, we were allotted $29,000. You can't do a whole lot with $29,000. That will not pay for a teacher. So we, what we, what we decided to do this year is we're going to use it for professional development, instructional supplies, and we have advertised for a part-time interpreter. We've been kind of pulling a lot from the high school. We have one EC teacher at Taylorsville, then we have a TA at Hidden Lake, and we've been kind of pulling everywhere to get letters translated, so we're going to hire a part-time interpreter that can help take care of some of that. Once again, Title III funds is very specific. It's identified children, that, the money can only be spent on those children. And I think right now, we are probably close to 80, 82 maybe identified. Now, that is identified children. We do know that there's a need of still some ESL children, so we kind of try to include them in some of the things, but we really have to make sure that we're hitting that 82 group. There is a tiny pot of money that we get, $536, and that is for, supposed to be an increase in immigrants in our district. So that was, that was, took a lot of thinking. So we developed what we're calling newcomer kids. So when we get new kids in the school, we've got a little backpack, we've got a translation, a translating dictionary, we've got calculators, we've got, you know, all, we actually have more of a high school bag and more of an elementary bag. And we've distributed those to the two ESL teachers, and they're keeping those as they get kids in. So it was kind of, you know, that's not a lot of money to, you can't really pay for a lot of that. And that's really all about the federal programs. The Title II is used to support the work that Dr. Curry does in the schools. This year, they are doing science mapping, the professional developments. It can, Title II can be used for all levels. It can be used for elementary, middle, and high school. So that is spread around quite a bit. And we are actually proposing to hire one more social worker, if you're thinking about the middle schools, that that person will be, be split between the two middle schools and will be, and one day a week will also be at Bethlehem. They are taking over attendance, and they are taking over the compulsory attendance law. They will be going to court, they will be working with families, like I said, to reduce those barriers. And I think, like, been presented tonight, I think the data shows how important it is. We've got to get them there in order to teach them, so.
Very good explanation. Thank you. You need action on this, is that correct?
Yes, I need action on that tonight to approve.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Do I have a motion to approve the plan as presented?
Leave it brief.
A second. Motion and a second. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor of approving the plan as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thanks.
Now, Ms. Mahaffey. Sorry about that. You know, I just get so excited about policy.
That's okay. They are visiting. The, the new policy that's up for review tonight is Fair and Consistent Discipline Administration. This policy simply outlines the board's commitment to administering discipline in a fair way and to not target one group with discipline, to have it fairly across the board. And it also says that the superintendent will report to the board the report that we send to DPI on discipline every year. This is a new policy and its first reading, so we'll let that stand for next month. There's another group of policy revisions that are up for first reading. The first two, parliamentary procedure and board attorney, were suggested by Chris Campbell that we, we change, we update our policy. Revisions to the parliamentary procedure reduces the policy, which was about two pages, to two paragraphs, and it says that we will use Robert's Rules of Order. The, the other part of the policy that we're removing was actually explaining Robert's Rules of Order, how you do it. So if we kept that, that would be more of a procedure than a policy. The board attorney, we are removing in our old policy, the first paragraph, which had become obsolete about when the board attorney is chosen. Unsafe school choice transfer, that policy simply changed some legal references. There was no major changes in that policy. The policy on weapons, bomb threats, terrorist threats, and clear threats to safety, simply add one of the weapons as mace, pepper spray, and other personal defense devices. And that was something that was changed in a policy we did earlier in the year. Then, the policy on contracts with the board and bidding construction work and supervision of construction policies, simply brings those three policies in alignment with the new policy we just approved on construction changes. Are there any questions?
I think we'll bring all of those first readings back next, next month, and it doesn't- And it doesn't look like the second, the second set, there were any real substantive changes. They were references and things like that. So I would anticipate we could move forward with those. Very near future. Thank you. Okay. I think we have completed our agenda. I need to have a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143318, 11A6. Motion in a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor of going into closed session at this time, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, we're going to enter closed session now. Thank you.